Is there a motion to accept tonight's agenda? All in favor? So, Dr. Harrison, over to you.
Alrighty, so good evening, everyone. As always, it is a pleasure to see you tonight. Few items, because we do want to jump right into our discussion on the capital project tonight. But as I posted on the website and on social media, yesterday, we facilitated our second round of COVID-19 surveillance testing, where we had over 100 individuals tested. So that's students, faculty, and staff. And all of those individuals who were tested came back as negative. So I'm not living in the false reality that that we're going to continue with this trend, but it's very, very pleasing to see that after two rounds of testing, we have not had any individuals test positive. Our next round of testing will be Monday, May 10. And invitations will go out to those folks who have been selected to participate on Wednesday. And as always, I extend my appreciation. And thanks to everyone's support who is participating in this process. And I want to give my accolades and thanks to our testing partners from Camp Mohawk, who are really doing an exceptional job. And also, again, to the Village of Irvington, their staff, the police department, and of course, our facilities crew, who are doing an excellent job. You know, it is budget season. As much as we're pivoting tonight to talk much more about our exciting capital project, I want to make sure folks are engaged. And, you know, living in this virtual world, we're losing some of those personal touchpoints that serve us so well in a small community like Irvington. And each year, I've always looked forward to those personal engagements, the dialogue that would surface around the money, many budget forums that we would have. So I do want to promote, and the PTSA will be sending out another email tomorrow morning as a reminder, that on Thursday night, at the PTSA general meeting, we will have another budget forum. So we certainly will encourage all of our community members that are interested, that want to learn more about the budget, to certainly come out and join us then. Carol and I will be present to be able to present an overview, overview, and then, of course, answer any questions that you may have. Related to the budget, today, the governor signed into law the flexibility that will be extended to registered voters to be able to acquire an absentee ballot with COVID as the illness or the rationale for it. It is a one-time opportunity that will expire at the end of this year, but that was just signed into law today. So there will be that flexibility. So if folks are not able to be present because they are traveling for business, or if they have health concerns or COVID-related concerns, please reach out to the district office, reach out to our clerk, Patricia, who will help you through the process of acquiring that absentee ballot. We are also doing a lot of work in the schools in and around end-of-year events. And we're hopeful that we'll see some guidance change in the state of New York following some of the trends that I'm seeing in some of our surrounding states, where they're permitting larger outdoor gatherings. And possibly, the news that's come forth from the CDC will help loosen those reins that are on us, and appropriately so. But, you know, we certainly have restrictions right now. But each school is actively involved in developing a series of end-of-year events that will celebrate one heck of a year for our students. Whether it's graduation, moving up ceremony, or field day/bulldog days, there's active planning that's going on, and there's going to be some exciting news coming out of each school as we look to celebrate what has been incredible, in many ways, an incredible school year. And then, on May 27, so one month from tonight, or four weeks from tonight, we are looking forward to a discussion at the board meeting on technology, where the administrative team will lead some dialogue about instructional technology. You know, when we step back and think about everything that's happened in the past 14, 15 months, experiences have shifted so much. Our inventory, as we know, has shifted as it relates to devices and the peripherals that support technology and instruction. So we've had opportunity to begun to reflect on the impacts of those experiences. And now is the time to start to make that link to future student learning. So we look forward to a robust dialogue that night, where we'll provide some details on those experiences, the lessons we've learned, and really, how our technology vision is evolving as a, you know, an outgrowth of this. I hear, you know, Beth, in a prior meeting, you talked about a silver lining, right? Well, there's lessons learned here that, for the good and the bad, where the role technology impacts us in our schools. So we're going to have that important dialogue that night, and we'll be able to engage about the direction we're heading with the use of technology. And then finally, this evening, I do want to take a moment to acknowledge two of our trustees that are being recognized by New York State School Boards Association in their recognition program as being involved in their continued education. First, I want to acknowledge Beth. And Beth, you have really stepped forward and become a great leader, and you have totaled 150 points worth of professional development hours and training hours through New York State School Boards. So as a result of your accomplishment, you're being awarded with a certificate from the School Boards Association. So kudos and congratulations. And then similarly, Mr. Hannah, you have received same recognition and looking at developing your leadership and totaling also another 150 points. So I have a nice certificate for you as well, that I will pass on at the closure of our meeting today. So congratulation, and thank you both for your service and dedication to schools and your leadership in school districts.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. So now we have an opportunity for any community comment. So if there are members of the community that wish to comment at this time, they can put their name and address in the Q and A feature in Zoom, and they'll be recognized. So seeing none at this time, we will move on to our next item, which, as we talked about a couple meetings ago, we would use tonight for an opportunity to update everyone on the current status of the capital project and where we're on both Phase 1 in terms of some of the work that's already taking place, and Phase 2 in terms of where we are in the planning process, and some of the discussions that have been happening at the B and G committee, and also a timeline of what comes next. You know, just to be mindful that, you know, tonight's presentation is like everything we do, a, you know, a snapshot in time in terms of where we're at today. The professional partners are still working on the designs to get from the 60% to the 90% phase, which we'll be talking about. And there'll be, you know, probably not as many design changes at that point in time, but that will also be a further refinement of the cost estimates that we'll be talking about this evening. So those will be continued to be worked on as the designs move from the 60% to 90% phase.
So we have a slide deck up. Perfect. Carol's doing it.
So as usual, I'll walk us through most of it, but Ms. Stein will correct anything I get wrong, or leave out, as always, and be able to answer probably questions that I don't know the answers to. And so, you know, and tonight's, you know, an opportunity for, you know, us to obviously talk about where we're at and where we're going. So it all started with, obviously, the initial approval of the project by the voters back in 2019. And the amount at the time was $18,867,642. At the time, it was designed to be a tax-neutral bond, so we're, we have borrowing that's expiring. This was meant to replace that and still stay in a neutral position, as I think we'll talk about. At some point, rates have come down from where we thought would be. So we're probably in a little better position than we were when we first started contemplating the project. And you see here the scope that we've talked about a lot, which is addressing some of the infrastructure needs, HVAC upgrades, paving sidewalks, safety and security, modernizing our academic spaces, in particular, the library just outside of the room here, and the same at Dow's Lane, addressing our storage needs. Anyone who's ever seen our art and music spaces, especially here at the campus, know how much we need better storage for those areas. The project's been divided into two phases, as we all know. We have Phase 1, which is underway now, and Phase 2, which will look to take place a year from now. Carol, you go next. So here are the Phase 1 projects, which I think we're all pretty familiar with at this point. The first one was the Dow's Lane Boiler. That has been completed that began the school year. And then we have the renovations here at the middle school and the campus, which includes the enclosures, the work that you see going on outside now in terms of the campus learning pavilion, the bleachers, some science upgrades, the casework I was just talking about. You have the Dow's Lane renovations, which, a lot of infrastructure work at Dow's, roof replacement, air conditioning, the security vestibule there, the outdoor bathroom, which will provide the opportunity for our student athletes to have a bathroom on-site and something that's probably long overdue, paving the parking lot. And then we have some of the district-wide projects, which are LED lighting and card access. So Carol, if you go next. So here was Phase 1, which we talked about more extensively back in January in terms of the bids that we awarded. So that's what you see in blue. Those are the awarded bids that were done. And you see the Dow's Boiler, which was already completed. So, you know, here's where we're at on Phase 1. We also have the lighting and card access, which I know Ms. Stein is working on an RFP for. So we can hopefully look to firm up those amounts shortly. As we'll be talking about this evening, there's some contingency allowances in the two bids, including $125,000 for the work that's going on on the campus. A lot of that is related to the CLP building and to deal with potential additional rock removal that we may have encountered. Thankfully, that did not happen. So we're, hopefully, that we're going to get a fair amount of the contingency, at least on the middle school project, back once that moves forward. Next. So here you go. Here's some of the progress that we've seen. So this, these are shots of the CLP from this past March and April.
Brian, do you want me to take you quickly through this presentation? The link to this?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, sure. Great.
Campus learning.
Yes.
So this is a presentation that Triton has made for us, and they are constantly giving us construction pictures. So I'm just going to, this is a PDF, I think. So just kind of quickly, again, with the scope, you already know, but the pictures are really kind of cool. So we've got groundbreaking pictures. And this will be on our website, so I'm going to go fast tonight. But if you want to go and look for it, this will be posted. So clearing the topsoil and moving the dirt around was the beginning aspects of all this. Fortunately, one of the things he noticed here was no rock was found. So we were worried about that. Most of the allowance that we built into this project was for the rock removal, which fortunately has not been a problem. Excavation, this is a PDF, so it's a little awkward. Excavation. Going into the hill, you know, we're in a slope here.
We should note that, in addition to the campus learning pavilion, it's also the foundation for the grandstands that are going in at the same time.
This obviously would be much better in a bigger screen up on the screen, so you can see the picture. So I do encourage you to look at it on your own computers. If you would like to do that later on, you'll be able to see the pictures in a better format. For pouring the footings, you know, and they obviously putting in the rebar to make that footing strong. I was a little bit worried about when they were pouring the concrete, how long it would take and disrupt the school process. But it, they were able to do it between the hours of before, after revival and before dismissal. So that was always great in my mind. So here they're pouring the concrete into the footings. There's always fabric that's put down, rock, everything, so that it can drain properly. So lots of great pictures. Every day, we get, we get pictures from the construction management company. These are all the footings were poured, then they went through the walls. Again, the same problem, I thought, but they did it all in that same period of time. Just kind of going through quickly now, they're building, you know, they take the forms off. And basically, you have walls. So, and now this is a couple days old. Oh, before they finish pouring everything, they're putting in sleeves so that all of the electrical plumbing connections will all be there. Obviously, that's important. And now they're backfilling. What they've already done, if you go outside and see it, they've already backfilled most of the dirt around it, so that it's not one big pile and a big mess anymore. It's now nice and clean again. So that's kind of where we're at here. Putting drains, preparing for the concrete slab for the floor. I'm not exactly sure what day they're pouring that. I'll find that out soon. And that's really it. So, again, I encourage you to go look at that.
Thanks. I think it's also just important to remind everyone that this is all coming from Triton, who's our construction manager. They're the owner's rep on the project. So you can see they're there every day, checking the progress, making sure that the work is proceeding in accordance with the plans, making sure that it's proceeding along with what the bids were from the contractors. So it's an important part of the process to have that person on-site every day following the project. Carol, is it to the, is it the one with the orange?
So.
Yeah, there we go.
Yes. Are you seeing it?
Yep.
Sorry about that. It's a little hard to see with the one screen. I work with three.
So we go to the next slide.
Okay.
So now with Phase 2, which I think everyone's relatively familiar with in terms of the different projects. We have the facilities storage building. So that's the building to store the district equipment. That will be in the back corner of the campus, the renovation to the library, the new vestibule, some air conditioning for the mar gym, casework, and some other upgrades at the campus. We have some work at the theater gym, the AC and the carpeting. At Main Street, renovating the PLTW and STEM classrooms, and the computer labs, air conditioning, the gym there, painting the bell tower. One of the things that, you know, we've talked about at different points is potentially enclosing the walkway to the gym. Yeah, as we'll talk about, that's something that is not going to be in the scope at this time, but we'll get to that as we talk a little more about where we're at. And then at Dow's, we have the library and computer room renovations to create a dedicated space for PLTW. And then a renovation of the library, which is, I guess, adjacent to those rooms as well. As I mentioned earlier, the goal is to have that work take place next summer. And, you know, similar to what we did this time around, hopefully, we'll be able to go out for a bid in the fall and come back with the bids in late fall, early winter, like we did this time, and be in position to award them again, hopefully, early next year at the latest. Yeah, so, you know, a little bit about process, which I talked about before. So last time around, we were talking about Phase 2. We were around the 30% process in terms of the development of the designs. Now we're at 60%, and the professional partners are working on refining the 60% drawings into 90%, which will then allow Triton to provide another layer of cost estimates. So I think those estimates will probably be sometime in June, given where we are on the schedule. So, you know, as we've talked about different times, we've been looking at value engineering and potential design changes. So as I talked about, we looked at a lot of carpet samples to try to find a material that, while was still attractive and would be functional and durable, was not as expensive as the initial carpeting allowances that were in the, in the initial projections. And I think we had, we had a lot of books. I think that was a good process. We looked at ceiling materials as well, the initial suggestion. Well, you know, the architects go off and they come up with wonderful ideas, and then you go and cost them out and start looking. And the design they came up with was extraordinarily expensive. It was, it was nice, but it was just an over-design for, you know, what the space is. So we looked at, we had a nice back and forth about looking at some of the other materials. And while still having a, I think, very nice design, we were able to look at reducing the costs of, you know, some of those, some of those parts of the project. And I think, and this is where Ms. Stein has been leading the charge in looking at state contracts and other areas where we can purchase goods for cheaper than Triton was estimating. So, you know, in particular, looking at the furniture that will go in the libraries. The initial numbers there were quite high, but by looking at, hey, you know, what do we need and purchase them from other sources, have been able to look to save money in that regard. And then, you know, last, and we'll talk about this in a little bit, scope and potential modifications or sequencing of work so that we make sure where, when we start spending money on portions of the project, we have a better sense of where we are overall. You know, so we got to talk about, there's some paving of the Dow's Lane, basketball court and sidewalks there that we're not doing right away, because we want to see where portions of the project come in over the summer and where our estimates go. So here we are for Phase 2. And as I mentioned, this is still 60%, so there'll be more. But you have the facilities storage building, and you look at where we're at right now. So it's roughly in line with the pre-bond numbers. You're looking at 937 versus 920. You have the high school renovations, which were in the pre-bond at 6.3 million. And now we're at a little over 6.8. One of the, you know, big drivers there is, there was the air conditioning for the gym. The initial estimates were incorrect on that. They didn't have the right square footage. So that has led to an increase in cost on that portion of the project. Then you have the theater gym building. Actually, to take it back, I guess, that's where the AC onwards came in. The, you know, high school piece is in part just due to, as the design has evolved and different iterations, there's been some increase in cost there. Then you have the Main Street school renovations, where we are actually looking at coming in well under what the projection was. That's for two reasons. A, the walkway, we're not looking at doing right now. So that's about $283,000 that comes out of that. And Main Street School, as I think everyone knows, is a over 100-year-old building. So initially, there was a lot of concern about what conditions may be found in the building and what may need to be done. But as they've been able to look at the building more closely, they've been able to refine the estimates. I mean, this is truly, you know, one of the challenges with the project as a whole, which is that the, all the pre-bond estimates are done with limited, you know, design work, limited investigatory work by the architects, because they are not allowed to start until we have an approved project and we're able to actually pay for that work. So they were trying to anticipate potential issues that they may find in that building. But now, when they've looked at it more, they're more comfortable with the state of the building and what those projects won't tell. So we're looking at coming in well under the pre-bond projections, which is obviously a good thing. Then you look at the Dow's Innovation Suite, and we're about where we are on the pre-bond projection at $1,038 versus $1,076. So.
So Brian, just, I'll just add that the high school project, one of the key drivers of that's over is the civil engineering aspect of redoing the entry of the high school. You know, when we made that first projection, it was like, all right, we're going to do this and level it up and bring some dirt. But they didn't have, obviously, the survey. They didn't have. They can't, you can't do that until you actually prove the project. So to Brian's point, until that's done and the civil engineers really look at it, it's hard to estimate how much that's really going to cost. So we'll talk a little bit more about that later, but that was one of the key drivers. And I think the second driver was the campus library, because as we met as a committee, there were really a lot of asks. And I think in the beginning, the architects, when they, and Triton, when they first made these projections, they didn't realize we were going to add all these different spaces. They just thought we were going to add a quiet space and, and, you know, do some changing of furniture with bookshelves. So we really added more scope to that original project than I think was estimated. So between the two, those are the key drivers of that, of that half a million dollar increase there.
I think, yeah, I forgot about the, that piece on the civil engineering. But that goes to the point I was saying, which is, until they did the drawings and saw the topography and what it would entail, they couldn't fully estimate the cost associated with that, which we're going to be talking about shortly. So if you go, so if you look at, just kind of go back to that slide for a second. So, you know, A, you know, right now, we're tracking about 148,000 over for this portion of the project. But I do want everyone to pay attention to the far right, which are the contingencies that are right now in all of those estimates and will be a lot of our construction contingencies that will carry through until we get bids and we start to actually have work done. So there's still about a half a million dollars in there, which we may or may not wind up spending, depending on how the projects actually play out when you're starting to put shovels and ground.
We're actually under, though, at, Brian, it's under. I think you just said over. At this point, we're under.
Oh, we're under.
No projection.
Oh.
We're over the estimate that we gave to the board in January, but we are under what we projected for the project.
Gotcha. Thanks. Okay, so we go next. So now we start to talk about some of the other conditions that we've become aware of. And one of them is the HVAC in this area and next door. And in speaking with district personnel, there's, there's been, I guess, complaints over the years about the room being too hot, too cold. And so we said, okay, let's look at trying to address that as part of this project, since we're renovating the space, it would be good to have it properly conditioned. So initially, our professional partner said, okay, we can put in an entirely new system, and that will cost $800,000. And everyone said, okay, thank you, and that's way too much, and that's not in the budget and not what we want to spend. So like homeowners often do as well, we said, okay, what's my other options? And they came back and have looked at using a hybrid system where we keep our existing system in place. And they came back and have looked at using a hybrid system where we keep our existing system in place, but add some supplemental smaller units to both the library space. And then also, I don't know if you remember from the design, but there are smaller rooms that could be created within the library in terms of conference rooms. No, actually downstairs and upstairs. Actually upstairs, it's really, it's only a smaller space because with the clearance, you can't get enclosed offices upstairs. So most of the offices enclosed space, right, there's just one upstairs, but most of them are going to be down on the main floor. So being able to condition those new spaces and the library, and they've come up with a $250,000 estimate for that. Now, this is not in the projections we were just talking about, because this would be adding to the scope. So we need to talk about that in connection with the entire project. But right now it's about $250,000, which is their estimate. This is still something that the engineers at H2M and Trident are working on and fine tuning. One of the other things that they're looking at is, so this room would not be part of that 250, but they're looking at what it would cost, for example, to condition this space and the computer labs. What would be included in the 250 would be conditioning those other spaces, but also having the infrastructure in place to then expand it to this bill, this room and the computer lab. But they're working on what it would cost to then fully complete that portion of the project. And Mr. Stein, I don't know if you got any more information today from them yet or not.
Now, they're still working on it because it's, it's a bit complicated. So they're trying to make something that we can then, as Brian said, put in and then also expand upon. So it's, it's taking our engineers a little bit of time on that one.
So next. So now we get to what we started talking about as well, which is the high school entryway. So I think we've talked a little bit about, you know, how this came about. But if you look on the left, that was the initial design, which as you can see, has a somewhat sloping ramp coming out. And I think if anyone thinks about the steps that are there now and that space and how much dirt you need to bring in to get it to that, that's what's driving the cost of that. So as we were talking about project budget, the professional partner said, well, if you look to do some combination of a ramp and stairs, you could save, you know, 200 to 250,000 dollars by just not bringing in as much fill as you would accomplish what's on the left. And we said, okay, let's explore that and see what that looks like. And that's now the design on the right, which we have a bigger picture of, which would be a ramp stair combination. Now, a ramp has to be part of the project no matter what, because for ADA compliance purposes, you need to add a ramp once you start renovating the space. So there needed to be some addition, no matter what, to have the accessibility. So this is after some back and forth, the, the concept that was arrived at, at the B and G level. So you have a ramp that's about eight to 10 feet wide. And then the steps there are about 10 to 12 feet wide and would be on center with the center doorway. So I'll say, I think the plants here are illustrative, but not representative. I think it looks a little more like what you'd find in the southwest, just looking at it. But there would definitely be some landscaping put in there to try to obviously make the space look, look nice. But so this would be what that concept would look like. So this is obviously a decision point at this point, to at least get some initial feedback from the rest of the trustees in terms of this design, because this is a design change. And since it's obviously such a prominent location, we wanted everyone to see the two, the two options. And then, you know, look at it in terms of the cost savings of this now newer option. So, so that's where we're at on this portion of phase two. Go to the next slide. So now this is where we look at the project as a whole. So we have a estimate that we had back in January where we were at 19 million, eight, two thousand and change. We're now up to 19,220,000 in change. So we're tracking right now about $350,000 over budget. But I just want everyone to see that we still have $730,000 in contingencies in this current estimate. So we know we should, or at least we think we should be getting back, you know, probably 75,000 or so, at least on the CLP from the, from the not having to go to the rock. So maybe 50, 75, but some hopefully significant money back for that. And then it's a question of, at this point, we don't know what will happen because a lot of those contingencies are carried over for phase two. And we'll have to see how projects play out. But at this point, if you looked at, we were, if we just used half the contingencies, we'd be at a, you know, we'd be within budget at, at that point roughly, if I did my math correctly. So that, that's as the project currently stands now in terms of original scope and looking at it. So that includes the high school entrance as is, but also does not include money to address the HVAC concerns that we just talked about. So now if you add in the two, about $250,000 that we were just talking about for the HVAC in the library, now you're at about $646,000 over. And if you look at the, and there's some contingency built into that. And then if you look at, if we were to adopt the change for the high school entrance, you'd be looking at approximately now a $382,000 over ridge at this point.
You might wonder why the contingency number keeps changing, but it is a percentage of the cost of the project. So it's calculating based on that. We're maintaining about a 5% construction contingency and 2% escalation contingency in those numbers.
And by escalation, that's talking about the potential increase in cost of materials and, and the services between now and when we'd go out to bid in the fall. So next. So as I think, as we talked about previously, the way this is sequenced, phase one, that work will be done. Hopefully by the time school starts or maybe soon thereafter. So we'll know where that has come in before we have to award the bids for phase two. So that will, so we'll have a good sense of where we landed and how much of the 200,000 or so in contingencies that are built into phase one have been, had to be used or will return to the district. And that's why I was just loose that, you know, obviously that then would get applied to the project going forward. And then, you know, we have, you know, a couple of other things to consider, which is obviously we can look to use, if to the extent we still have a shortfall, other budgetary funds to make up that shortfall. As we've talked about, we do have some one-time aid payments that we should be seeing in a couple of years, which we could use towards it. But also, as I think I mentioned at the very beginning, our borrowing costs are also likely to be less than we had initially anticipated because rates right now are pretty low. So having that, Sean, you have a rough, like a rough estimate of what we think we may save?
Yeah, I do. So when we estimated the project, we were budgeting for like almost a 4% increase, 4% rate. Rates right now for a 20-year bond are about one and a quarter, one and a half. So building in a cushion of another 30 basis points on that, which is what I asked our capital markets advisor to do, so it's 1.8. I'm coming up with approximately $275,000 a year savings to what we figured in a tax neutral bond. So where, where we, we had the ability to have like about a 1.2 million dollar payment, we'll have that a little under a million dollar payment. So it's favorable to us. That gives us a lot of options in terms of how we want, you know, what we want to do in terms of that savings. Could we put some of this to the project in the first year potentially to finish it? Yes. Could we, you know, put it somewhere else in the budget? Of course. Could we do, could we lower the rate, the years on the project and maybe save somebody that way? Yes. But when we get a little closer, we'll make that, we'll make that, but, but that is an opportunity for us. So it's favorable and the, and the current plan will be to go to bond mid-year next year. So that we're going to lock in these rates. So I'm going to do another short-term ban for a six-month ban to get us through the summer. And instead of doing another full year ban, and I'm looking to go to bond right away in January, December, actually December. So that will maximize our rates. Short-term vans are extremely cheap right now as well. They're the lower, the longer, the shorter term borrowing is the, is the most reliable right now. Because, because obviously that, you know, the longer you go out, the higher the rates go. So we're going to have some favorable news here. So I really do want to lock in because rates are starting to go up a little bit.
No, I think everyone agrees that would be great to do that sooner rather than later, given that rates probably can only go up at this point.
They really can.
So we go next. So, you know, here are, you know, some of the planning considerations that we've have been, at least come up at the B and G level. Cause obviously right now, let, let's assume worst case scenario, or maybe not worst case scenario, but that we use all the contingencies and we're still then have a shortfall. You know, we, we want to look at, you know, what we don't do today that we could then look to do later, whether it comes out of the one-time aid we'll get or some of the interest savings, but at least projects that we can, that may be ready to do right now, but we're not going to do today. We may do in three months, six months, depending where, how the project evolves. So that's the paving at Dow's lane for the basketball court, which is a $62,000 alternate. And then we have the main street walkway, which we talked about, which right now isn't in the project, but would be an alternate. But I think, you know, that's probably, I would say, the very last thing that we would look to do and probably still look to do it in maybe a different way, since we don't know what's going on in that space with the theater long-term. But it's something that has been designed, so at least we'll have that, that design piece of it. And it'll be an alternate, so we could decide where everything comes in, whether we want to have that alternate or not. And then, you know, there's, and, and looking at long-term in terms of, you know, what we would do to manage, you know, potential more significant overages. Yet two of the issues are, one, the car to access piece. Since that is standalone work in that it's not work that is reliant on coordinating with the general contractor and some of the work that's going on in terms of actually building buildings and his work that can be done over break, it can be done at night. There's that work that doesn't have to be done over the summer where the construction work has to get done over the summer. So we could look to not do that work right away and see how everything plays out, see where our bids come in, in the fall. And then assuming we are seeing where things are tracking and we think we're in a good position, go ahead and do that, that time, we could wait and hold off until we see where we have flexibility at that point. And then the other item would be the facilities building. So whether looking at that as an alternate for the bid. So that way, if we're in a real worst case scenario and we're not able to get everything done next summer, you know, let's say, you know, hypothetically, we're at a point where we're $400,000 over still. And the facility building costs about 900,000. So you'd still have about 500,000 left in the project at that point in time. And we could look to then use the interest savings from year one and other funds to then finish that building a year later, but would still do all of the other projects that would have a more student-facing impact initially, and then have that project then completed later. So the thinking is that at least as we go forward, that the facilities building would be an alternate or looked at something that we couldn't decide not to award, you know, next January or so. If the project is still looking over or if the bids come in a little higher than we're expecting, that may be an area where we look to, to delay something for a year to 18 months to accomplish the rest of the project and then use the other funds for that. So here are our next steps. So H2M is finishing the design work, so those designs will go up to SED and get for approval. I think right now we're running, you know, somewhere in the 12-week or so range for approval. So if they go up middle of next month, we should hopefully by sometime July, August, have approvals back from SED, which we could then use to put together our bid packages and get that out in the fall. Trident, once they get those 90% drawings, we'll cost estimate it again. So in mid-June, we should get those numbers from them. And then we'll have the 90% drawings. And if there are, you know, any changes, we can look at to, you know, what drove those changes? If there's any further value engineering that Trident may recommend based on their estimating, because it may be that there's a design feature that they'll come back and say, you realize this is coming in really expensive, trying to spend good at, at highlighting issues for us in terms of things that are expected, that, you know, just let us know that there are places that may be expensive and that you may have alternates that you want to look at. And it doesn't mean we have, we have to take those alternates, but they've been helpful in that regard. And I think, you know, we've talked about all the, all the rest of this. At, at this point, I think, I don't want to just keep reading. So I mean, with Carol, is there anything else or is that our last slide? That is it. So at, at this point, I know I've talked a lot and there's a lot out there. So obviously to the extent trustees have questions and you want to hear them, I'll say the one thing that we don't have to make a decision on tonight, but I think it's important that we get at least initial feedback on and that people are thinking about is the high school entrance. Because if it's something that people either hate or love, you know, obviously want to hear that because we do want to give guidance to the professional partners on that. We don't have to make a decision tonight. We have to make a decision over the next two to three weeks, ideally on that, so they could then get those designs submitted. But, you know, if there's questions, if people want more information on that, we can certainly do so. But I think that's an important piece to talk about tonight, just so people can give initial reactions and then we can give direction to them. So that's it.
Much for me. I, I just, you know, I mean, I'm, you scroll back to the picture of the front entrance? Yeah, I mean, you put the ones that are side by side, but one more back. I mean, you know, I'm, you know, I'm indifferent really. To me, like the concept of the ramp is very important to me, obviously. This, they both clearly have it. Do I like one better than the other? One provides a little more lounging space under a tree versus somebody sitting on a rock. Minor details to me, in my opinion, you know, I, I mean, I, I think the, the original drawing is more appealing. But I don't, you know, at the cost savings of almost a quarter of a million dollars, to me, knowing that just from my own home, you know, things run into different ranges and having the ability to save money where we can with the, is probably the best, is probably a strong move. You know, those are my only real opinions here. Like I think, you know, and I appreciate through this presentation, the, the showing where the different costs are changing and savings are being made where there's over just happening. So we're covering those things and not really spending more out of pocket and things to that effect. So that information is really great. But as far as this, I, I am, I can sit with the majority.
No, look, I, I think if you ask everyone in, you know, just cost not being a factor, you know, probably everyone probably prefer option one, but then when you start getting into the, the call, maybe I made more for his option two, but so. But I think, you know, your cost obviously has to go into every decision in terms of is, is something worth the cost versus the alternative? So that's really, I think, what's driving the discussion, if, if, you know, depending on people's preference.
I mean, I know, knowing that, that, that just from having. I mean, I know, knowing that, 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 just from having been fortunate enough to sit through the first set of construction work that we've done, you know, things change, prices change. And, and the idea that, you know, one big lesson I've learned around the, this type of capital work is that the state demands the, you can't get approval until the drawing, you can't make the real drawings, and then the cost change based on the real drawings. So I know that where we can save money is probably, probably smart to do so, in my opinion. Just knowing where these projects come.
They've also, the drawing on the left is, is the rendering that was done pre-bond, you know, pre, pre-approval.
Right.
And it's not even exactly what is designed right now. It's hard because we don't have another picture, because we just have a drawing like on a blueprint, you know, thing. So it's not even exactly this that was able, they were able to do. This was before the civil engineers were able to do anything. So it's still not even going to look exactly like that. So we're, we're comparing the new design to something similar to that, at least it was all level. There was no steps, but it wasn't, it won't exactly look like that.
I know, I never, I haven't seen them. So, I mean, I just, these, both of these drawings, however, do make me think they're totally out of pocket and off the thing, but some bike racks might be nice to encourage kids to bike to school.
Oh, and that can all be done.
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, the, but both of those drawings do look to me like there would be bike racks on some sort of campus-y situation. But that's not it.
It's a very inviting space. And to me, the key is that we make use of the main entrance for the high school, so we can have a more separation between our middle school and high school pedestrian traffic. And then we can create single points of entry for each school to ensure that our schools are much more secure. And that's what this achieves primarily.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, that's it, that's it for me.
You know, and I just, Dr. R saying, you know, one of the things that we've talked about in the past, but if you're now, now in front of the design, you know, it's not just the entrance that's being done. The entire traffic pattern is also being altered as you come up the hill. So, you know, there's also a lot of civil engineering around that. So the current, you know, really steep grade that you gain as you're coming up to the building is going to be leveled out and slightly repositioned. So the sun hopefully isn't right in your eyes as you're coming up. So that's another, you know, important, you know, part of this.
Yeah, and I would also say that in reconfiguring, we're reconfiguring the entire staff parking lot to change the traffic pattern. So the entrance will be on the Mazara's field side, and we're pulling the traffic away from the building. So we're increasing, I want to say 10 to 15 feet of an additional buffer between the building and the actual driveway. That's going to make for just safer spaces when our, you know, fewer risks of, or lower risk of pedestrian accidents, vehicles that are going to come in contact with the buildings. There's going to be bollards along the, the walkway to protect our pedestrians. So there's many, many components that, that feature, that are factored into this.
If I may also add for my colleagues, why I shook my head about the, the first rendering, rather than, and actually favored the second slightly, is that when we talked about the way, the locations that pedestrian traffic would be coming from, it was clear that they were split and that the grassy area to the left in the first picture would most likely be walked on, right? Because people would be coming from the direction of the parking lots and the upper part of the campus toward the entrance to the high school. So to me, this really puts more of the sidewalks where the pedestrians will be walking.
That's a good point, Mark, because you know what? That's how we ended up with a dust bowl over by the middle school. And, you know, we had to actually turf that, right? Because of the, the way the kids would walk across and every which way. So when I first came, I'm like, oh my, you know, and, and I kept saying to Gary, why can't we grow grass here? He says, Carol, I can't, I tried every which way. So you're right, and that would end up probably happening. You have another front dust bowl if we did that. So that's a good point.
I think such a wise point, and I, and you may have seen me snicker a little bit even behind the mask. And I had a little flashback to my undergraduate work, where I went to college campus to see a comedian perform. And at that time, there was major construction happening on the college. And the comedian said, I don't know what contractors and planners don't get. What they need to do is put up the buildings, see where the students walk, and then pour the concrete for the sidewalks. Because here it was, students traipsing through all the hay where the new grass is growing and these beautiful sidewalks sitting empty. So some, a wonderful point, which brought up a very funny experience.
Beth? So I'm going to limit my comments to a question about the high school entry. So I'm going to limit my comments to the high school entry design issue that we're all discussing right now, because that seems to be the area of great interest. So I do find it helpful, what more get it said about walking through the grass, but I still don't see how, let's just call it rendition one versus rendition two. Rendition two being the one with the ramp and the steps. That could still be something that could be dealt with in the design process while keeping the first design. So just my notes, when this was presented this evening, there's more hardscape, which is non-permeable. There will be more of a snow removal issue because of the ramp, which will get iced up and will have snow in the steps. That ramp to me looks like an attractive nuisance, which will lead people to use it as a parkour or a skateboard area. There's less opportunities for landscaping. Now, a huge driver in our design process had to do with security, let's all remember. Then when we started having our bond conversation, it was after Parkland. And right now, although our focus is more in a pandemic as an emergency, which makes us think about outdoor space, ventilation, these sort of things, we do know that we've had tragedies in Indianapolis, Boulder, and Atlanta, and our security issues haven't gone away. So in addition to the security issues, my recollection of the bond conversations, where we had many stakeholders coming in, talking about sustainability and environmental aspects. And when we talk about those aspects, we talk about the difference between non-permeable hardscaping, which doesn't only impact water flow and overflow into our storm systems, but it also impacts heating and cooling. And one of the conversations we had originally had to do with more landscaping, to use botanical landscaping practices, not only to have pollinator pathway-friendly things, which was sort of a minor topic, but the fact that deciduous trees work to both cool and warm areas. And we also talked about coniferous trees working as windbreaks for the winter. So we discussed all of that. So Plan Two actually moves away from the ability to work on some of those aspects of the project. I think that takes care of it. And the other thing is, when we look at this and we look at the ramp and the steps, there's an expression in civic engineering and in many other areas involving diversity, inclusion, and equity, where we talk about ableism, ableism. So when you take a design, like the first picture, the one that we had last year, in which everybody walks in the same way to get into the building versus one where we have steps and a ramp, it's actually perceived in some design quarters as somewhat more ableist, meaning that it's dividing access. So those were the issues I wanted to raise. One has to do about permeable surfaces, two has to do with snow removal, three has to do with attractive nuisance, four has to do with the sustainability, heat savings, cooling savings with less landscaping. And my final comment had to do with ableism. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I think certainly Design Two has probably has more hardscape. But I think it's also important that what you're seeing in the rendering of number one isn't what would actually be built either. So I think the, the ramp in that design, I think, is much narrower than actually what would be, that's in the current designs, the current design has the ramp spanning at least both of the doorways and then coming out and down, which I don't think it's really represented that way in, in the rendering. So it is, so while the rendering was the initial concept of at least being a ramp as the only means of access, it's the ramp, if constructed, would not look exactly like that. It would be a, a bigger ramp, I guess, for lack of a better word.
Okay, wider, be interesting to see more details in the future. I've just registered my preference, which I guess was the question. And whoever mentioned bike racks, yay, bike racks.
So, Michael?
Great to have the additional points of view on, on new or, you know, adjustments to, to plans. Because even though we have many different eyes looking at it, it's great to have the additional points of view that, you know, sort of fresh eyes. It's pretty fresh for us too, who are on the, the committee to be looking at some of these features that, that we're having to reconsider. So for my part, I, I'm sort of just digesting some of the comments that you shared. On the other hand, yeah, well, but there is a bit of a challenge in that, I think, pretty quickly, we're looking as a district to move forward on, on one or the other. Just because of timelines, that's always what I'm feeling is part of this process. The timelines are always weighing on you. But, you know, I, I was very reticent when we first talked about this adjustment. Clearly, you know, we were trying to deal with, with mitigating some of the overages. And, you know, one thing that we will save by doing, if we do this alter, this alternative is many, 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 many fewer trucks coming up and down the hill. So that's one sort of positive, where there's that much less truck trips of carrying dirt back and forth, and there's a positive there. Brian, my understanding with these pathways actually is, is my sense is that the width of them is pretty similar. You know, about 10 to 12 feet, the ability of two people walking one way and two people walking the other way to walk past each other is how I understood it.
I think, I think that's certainly the pathway in two. I thought when we were looking at the pathway for the original, it's wider because it covers both, at least both doorways, and I think you even land by the security area. We can pull up the plan, but because if that's the only way in and out, I think it has to be wider than just the 10 to 12 feet.
Yeah, so that, that, that would make sense. I'm more reliant visually, so I think you're right, we should be looking at the plan rather than the picture. But.
And Michael, just let me just interrupt for a minute. I mean, obviously, we can get our professional partners to actually tell us the difference in the amount of permeable space, and we can get that information, so.
Get that feedback. So, but anyhow, I think, you know, I think you're right about that. It will be more, more care to, to manage the, the stairs, you know, the landscaping. You know, in some ways, this will be even a more direct path for those coming from the various drop-off points, if they, if they follow this path to, to Maura and Dr. Harrison's points. So I think that's, that's good. So, so while I was very reticent, I'm, I'm much, I'm, I'm fine with the direction we're going with this, and I, and I would support it. But, yeah, I have questions that would take a long time to go through in terms of trying to understand the overages. And I appreciate the, the effort that you spent trying to present it and clarify it. So I sent my questions, hopefully we can get some clarification. So my main question, I, I missed the discussion perhaps around this card key access, the delay in implementing them to, to Beth's point about the security features. There are some security features that seem to be more pertinent than others. The card key access seems to me to be very important. But one of the key things that I've read about, and I think that we've read about in, in the situation, is the ability to control and delay access, and that I associate that with the card key access. And we've always prioritized implementing the security features in phase one. So for me, I, I understand the points that were made, but I don't think, it doesn't seem to me that they warrant delaying this important feature for our campus security and safety.
That's, I think it's a, it's a fair question and concern. I think the one, this is one particular area, as I think Brian referenced before, is that we have, have a degree of flexibility in and around it because of how the work can be performed, the types of vendors that do the work, because a lot of this is on state contract. So we'll be able to hire someone off a state contract in some cases. And then we will also potentially have that flexibility where we could still complete it. When Carol thinks about savings from the financing of the bond, well, we think the numbers almost line up right there. So when we think about the additional one-time monies that we have associated with the stimulus funds that are coming in, and one of the categories that they allow us to fund is school safety and security initiatives. So if we think about the potential savings associated through financing and other one-time monies coming to the district, if we are over the budget, we may choose to move this outside of it, but still fund it and pay for it in a different manner. So I think it's a consideration, but I don't think there's any determinations that, that have been made. It's a one idea that Carol actually generated that we've put out there as just to, to model one approach where there could be some savings and we could seek a different means.
Is it possible to do this different mechanism without delaying the implementation?
I don't think we have the money. I think that's the issue. We wouldn't have the, so I think, because initially.
The money, I mean, like with the laptops, we are the tech spend, we had to spend it before we got it.
Yeah, in that case, we do. In this case, we're not quite sure as of yet. But there's, you know, from what we're guessing now, you have up until a period of time, as we presented in the budget process, either 23 or 24 to utilize the monies. So our expectation, once the grant process comes out, is that we'll be able to draw on those funds, but they haven't given that clarification as of yet.
As always, I, I am very appreciative of the, of the very sharp thinking that goes into how to accomplish it. I just very leery about delaying this aspect. You know that I've been critical of other security features. This is not the one I'm critical of. I think it's really important, and, and I don't think we should delay.
Michael, I, I agree. I think it is a important feature. I think it's a difference between doing the work this summer versus potentially doing the work four months or six months later. I think that's the decision that we have to talk about, just given what's the uncertainties and we don't know where the budget on the project is going to lie. That once we spend that money now out of the project, it's obviously then, you know, not available for other parts of it. So I think that's, that's, I think, the, you know, concern that's motivating that. But, look, I, I agree. It's something I'd like to see done as, as soon as possible. I think we just need to be mindful of the overall project. And there are very few large items at this point that we could pull back that don't require mobilization and the general contractor to be on site to get done. But, you know, whether it be, you know, over, over the summer, so.
Yeah, the other thing I would just say to that is that in June, when we get our 90% estimates, we should have a better idea of where we're at. And if this is something where we could award it very quickly, so if in June we find that we're in a favorable position, we may decide, okay, let's go ahead and proceed with that. Because now it's with the contingencies plus where our new estimates are, we're tracking in a favorable position. Let's go ahead and award it, and we could probably get it also done in the summer. So it is, you know, something that could, a decision that we could make in here.
Yeah, I, I'll stick with that. Feel comfortable if you have this ready to go when the door is open in September for everyone, for you, for our students, for our faculty. I think it's an item that our other trustees should also weigh in on whether they feel it would be appropriate to delay the card key access. I understand the reasoning and the challenges and the fiscal benefits, but, you know, I, I don't think it merits the, the delay when we know we can have it done before doors open on, on September. And just my final question, Main Street School, it's amazing that it's 900 to a million dollars less than, than anticipated. So the aspects around floor abatement, waistlines, electrical service upgrades, all those things are still happening for Main Street School?
The, the electrical upgrade has to happen because that's how we're being.
Right.
Otherwise, so I think we talked about that. The floor abatement is also definitely part of the project in its. in several rooms, not just the PLTW room, but it's in a couple of rooms where the floor now is just too high. You can't, you cannot taking care of it. So we're at a critical point on that. And it was in our building condition survey. It will be replaced. We absolutely have to do that.
And these are and these are the things that turned out to be a lot less expensive than originally thought.
And so I think, you know, again, when when we probably scared Triton in the beginning, we told them it was a 100 year old building and that everything is going to cost more. There's still some risk here, I will say, that there's still some risk when SED does the planning, that they might say you have to do X, Y, and Z. So there's always that potential that could happen with this building. And we're trying to keep it low key. So it does not happen. But there's always that potential that they could say, all right, well, you have to fix all these deficiencies in this building and upgrade it. We're hoping not.
We just have to give Triton, SED, and everybody else a tour of the building so that they know it's it's the most solid building in Irvington.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can ask Angel out every day. So.
Yeah.
But yes, all those things are still in the in the project.
No, and and just to add to that, during the planning stage, I mean, that was a real concern that we were looking to try to do as little as possible to not get into those 100 year issues. So people had a lot of ideas of what, you know, we may want to try to do it Main Street. And then when you start talking with Triton, said, okay, if you start opening this up, you don't know what you're going to find. SED may tell you now to make a bunch of other changes. So you're also somewhat constrained by the building's age in terms in terms of what we would look to do and what we would imagine doing, just because, you know, it would just turn into a prohibitive project pretty quickly.
All right. Thank you.
Maura?
I I'm really here tonight to listen to what questions our colleagues have. So I I am comfortable and comfortable in holding off on most of my questions for the next meeting. I think, but I mean, I will just hold out the possibility that I will change my mind at one point.
Sure. Jane, go ahead.
Um, yes, I I agree that picture number two does look like a skateboard park. And when I think about schools and you want them to be more inviting, I I think that the picture number one rendering, number one is 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 more inviting. It doesn't have the barriers of the steps and the ramp. It's just like come in right here. So I'd have to go with number one for many reasons. Also, they could put another cement walkway if there was a shortcut from the doors to the parking lot. So that wouldn't have to be the grass wouldn't have to be trampled on. And then you think about, you know, kids hanging out on the weekends with their skateboards on the ramp. I just.
I mean, you do have a ramp in both. It's just this one shown with a railing. There is a a ram in in both.
It it doesn't look as steep and it doesn't have a railing from what I could see. So that's just my opinion.
Yeah, no, those are definitely, it's definitely different. I just want, because you don't see the full pictures, I would be, I should, it is a ramp, it's a more gradual ramp in number one, which is why it's more expensive because of the amount of fill that you need in to achieve that grade. So that is certainly a concern. Was was that the extent? Okay.
May I jump in? Would will there be a, this is more of a process question then, would there be an update to the board once we get to the 90% cost estimate? So maybe rather than being an entire meeting dedicated, just a quick update.
You know, there certainly certainly will be once we we get to that point.
So I just would point out that we really can't get to 90% estimates until we make a decision on this because the architects have to design this in order to get this to be done. So they were hoping to have a decision within a week or so, or so that they can finish the design so that it can go to SED. And then that that starts the clock for Triton to do the estimating. So if Triton doesn't get it till mid May, it's still going to take them at least three, four weeks. Now we're talking the end of June. So we make a decision sooner, then we'll have that information sooner. So I just reminded you all of that.
Is it possible, I'm sorry, is it possible to get an aerial rendering that shows us exactly the amount of space that's impermeable in each design?
I can ask that question back.
Thank you.
You know, again, these are renderings, these are not the actual civil drawings, but I can try to get some of that information answered.
And and where I would maybe supplement that, not only that, when we come back to thinking about the landscaping, there's opportunity for, there's no defined landscaping that's like associated with this. And as Brian said, some of the plantings look like we could be in the Southwest, right? So we could actually think of and put together a group of folks that would be looking at making some recommendations that would identify the particular plantings that would have the the best impact environmentally.
Right. But I guess my issue, just so we don't, you know, I understand that it would be the order of dealing with landscaping issue. But when we're talking about a large increase in hardscaping, that's that's another issue.
Yeah, I think as we said, we should get from our professional partners, they can give us the amount of square footage of impermeable space in each one. So they should be able to tell us that.
I know, we'd always talked about that in terms of the sun for the drivers and the additional parking spaces, but this has to do with the entrance, which for me was like a big selling point of the whole design.
Yeah, wing.
No, I do. I do think that when we talk about the one of the priorities being security, the cards are clearly part and parcel of security and were part of the entire concept of the vestibule indoor and outdoor, the vestibule and the one entry, one exit plan. So I didn't hear, though, that it was being delayed that much. I thought it was just being separated out from an accounting viewpoint.
It's really a difference between going forward with it this summer before we know where our bids are on phase two versus waiting until that process. I think that would be the first breakpoint where we'd look to see what you want to do. I think also remember that what we're looking at right now in terms of the single entryway won't be built until the following summer.
I'm sorry. And and so there wouldn't be a delay in implementing the cards because the cards go with the new entrances.
Yeah, we still have the the we have a new vestibule at the at the middle school that's going to be completed. The enclosure is going to be completed here. New vestibules at Dow's Lane as well. But Carol, there was the prospect of being able to look to do some of the card entry, card access work this summer, summer of 21. So what I think the point of saying that it's not saying that'd be eliminated from the project, that would be potentially pushed to next summer when we see where the budget lies.
However, I mean, that said, if everybody's in agreement that it's a critical aspect of the project, then we might as well proceed.
Right.
Understand that. And then we can just award it. I can just start to do the cost estimates now. So.
Can you unmute your camera? Your mic?
Yeah. I remember that we had talked about the doors being open and because the campus wasn't enclosed, people could come and, you know, when we had the discussion, not that people will or have, but that was the thing with the card, right? So now that the enclosure is going to be up for me, right, that sort of doesn't, it limits my concern about, it it doesn't lower the importance of it, but it doesn't make it as urgent to me.
Yeah, it's an it's another mitigating effort here, right? So.
So it works.
mitigation. And I want to remind everybody that the card access system works with exterior doors, but it also works with interior doors where we're thinking about replacing the actual keys. So we're thinking that classrooms, you'll be able to lock and close centrally, which will make, you know, the lockdown proceedings.
And they showed us the teachers can open it from special thing. There's this hitch on the door.
Yep. Yeah, there's an emergency kind of.
You know, it's certainly a important safety feature and something that we all want in the project. I think, you know, the discussion centers around if we come up at the point where we are, you know, $250,000 over budget at the end, that would mean not building the facilities building when you have all of the people on site and going ahead with the with the card reader. Or do we look to pause it for some period of time until we have greater comfort around the overall project and the overall budget? That's really what it comes down to. I I would love to do it tomorrow. I think it's a important feature. I just think if we go forward with it, now we just have to be mindful that that decision may mean that if we are over budget at the end of the day by, you know, 200, $250,000, the facilities building would likely have to wait a year plus before that gets built. I think that's really what the consideration would come down to. And I'm I'm not saying one is better than the other. I just think we need to be cognizant of what what decisions may mean for other parts of the project down the road. And we can certainly prioritize it however we want. We just need to know what it may mean.
So just to add to that point, I I kind of agree with Brian, that if you believe that this is an important part of the scope, we should just now go do it. And then the risk would be facility build. Because when you look at this slide, which I think you can see now, right, the, you know, we're if, and I guess my answer depends also whether or not you choose to take the high school alternate entrance where you're going to save some money there. But if you do that, you know, you have a much better comfort level that we're going to end within the project scope. And then the question would be obviously that the facilities building. So I think that's the key. And then whether or not you choose to do, you know, look at the AC alternate and whether or not you choose to save the money with the high school entrance. I also did, Beth just now emailed or texted the architect who had another meeting today, but he said it would be available via text. And he said it's 320 square feet less green space. So that's not really a whole lot.
Oh, say that again.
320 square feet less of green space. I will have him confirm that tomorrow when he can, you know, do it in the office. But but he said it's really not a lot of lost green space. So the other one has a walkway. This does have stairs, but there's still quite a lot of green space because as as you said, we added, we moved away from the building. We've added more on the other end. So there's a lot of green space. And with trees, you should be able to really gain back. And I think when we get to that part of the landscaping, since we actually did not include a lot of money for landscaping here, and we're going to need to 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 fundraise a little for that and figure that out, we have not very much money in there for that. We can really talk about what tree we could put in and what other plants we could do to as you said, to promote pollination. And those are the things we were talking about. So.
Pollinator friendly, sustainable landscaping practices, but it also doesn't address the other issues I raised. But I appreciate that I seem to be in the minority.
Erin? Go ahead.
Okay. So as the two designs, I'm I'm comfortable with the second design, especially knowing that we're over budget in phase one by a half a million dollars to be offset by the phase two costs by savings of 150, which is what's netting to the 353 of of net overages. So given that I'm comfortable with phase two, that's not to say that I don't agree with Beth about, you know, building something that's sustainable. I am wondering, though, and we sort of touched on this, are the are the annual operating costs higher with the second design because of the snow removal? Is that, is it more costly to maintain that with salt and things like that to go down on the pavement?
Because I discussed that with Gary, Erin, that's a good question. And I discussed that with Gary not too long ago. Right now, we're clearing all of those steps. Okay, so whatever we going to be an improvement. And anytime you have, you know, a wide enough area, you can get, you know, a snowball in there. It's easier to do.
Okay.
An hour a night. It takes a lot of manpower to keep that clear. And it's also, you know, a danger. So we have only have a smaller amount of steps, which is going to be a much nicer area to to clear.
Okay.
Obviously, you know, with the option of a ramp, a lot of people will choose that. I just see the ramp as probably the more main entrance because people are going to be coming from the buses in that area. They're going to be going right up to the school. So I do see that. And that's, I do see that as a main entrance, but.
Can you eliminate the steps?
Well, that if we do that, we won't have the savings because then we then we have the whole issue of the grade. The savings emanate from the fabric of bringing less fill in and you're not changing the slope gradually. So you're going like from a seven foot pitch to a four foot pitch. You know, so the the pitch is really what's what's where you're saving the money.
Gotcha.
Where we're going to have some small amount of savings, which I think will, they'll be able to factor into again when we get to 90% and I didn't include it here yet. But the dirt that we're saving from this first project, we're going to also include. So, you know, that's why I'm I'm hopeful that the the estimates right now for for the high school project will will start to come down to 506 because of these types of savings. That number will come down. It's going to come down if we do the new entrance and if some of the fill we're saving. So and then some of the other things that we're looking at. So I I'm hopeful here.
Okay.
I'm sorry, the seven foot pitch to the four foot pitch is from what we have now to rendering number two. And then what was the pitch for rendering number one? Do you know?
Well, that's eliminating the pitch that you cannot have. You can have no steps. So that's going, I think, from the seven. I have to look at the exact notes there, but it's a considerable pitch right now. And so lower, you know, having those few set of steps will help to keep that pitch a little bit so that we can, again, if you look at the design, you still have a slope, but it's gradual enough that you don't need, you know, we if we look at what the B and G committee talked about, we talked about a ramp that went up and down like a switchback ramp. That is ableism. I mean, that then when you see a switchback ramp, you're thinking, I don't want to do that, right? That's that's to me truly would have, and we rejected that for that reason. And we maybe didn't label it that, but we, I think we all knew it, what we were thinking about that. Because then who chooses to use a ramp, right? When you have to go up and down.
I wasn't aware that that was one of the options.
That was one of the options. That was one of the very earliest renderings that we were thinking about trying to save some money. So but we went through about seven designs of this literally, I think. And this was seemingly the best way of of kind of attracting both both the idea to save some, keep a little pitch, keep a little hill. Our architect talked about creative landscaping to hide the wall, to, you know, to hide the pitch. And again, this drawing is still a rendering. It's not, they had not finished designing this because we haven't given them the permission.
And when we've talked about committee, like you said, I think we all agreed that by far, the vast majority of people entering the building will be taking the path and you know, a certain number of people who come up the hill might take the stairs. So it's the the main entrance is the path.
So thanks, Carol. So that my other, I guess, comment or question is around the key card entry. I actually agree that I feel like it's it should be a priority. I think especially coming out of the pandemic with, I I think we've forgotten a little bit of like what happens in society nowadays because so many people have been inside. But as people start to slowly stop quarantining, getting vaccinated, we're seeing shootings again on the rise, like all these things. I think security is just paramount. And to delay it, I think we're, you know, I think it's important and I don't think we should delay it. That's my comment on that. And then my only other comment is just in terms of the style of the presentation. I know on this, on the phase two slide where we summarize the cost, I don't know if we want to go to that. So we we included this pre-bond projection. And then if you go to phase one slide, the phase one slide, we didn't, we can back into what that number is. I just think for ease for the community and for transparency, I think we should just include that column on there and just highlight, you know, that we are over right now in phase one. This is a fluid process by all means. And we know that a lot of these costs could change once we actually go out to bid in phase two. But I would just suggest. But I would just suggest that going forward, we have a consistent presentation so that everyone can sort of easily see what the numbers are. And those are my comments.
May I ask a question?
You go ahead, Mara.
Erin is finished. Could could you talk us through the. Again, the decision making or the 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 set of decisions around the HVAC. Cost cut that's being offered. So the choice that's being offered on moving from the eight hundred. Thousand dollar. So HVAC overhaul to the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar hybrid system and. What that choice is like again.
Sorry, you you tailed off at the end there, Mara. I think it's really the difference between, I think, you know.
Eight hundred thousand dollar option and the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar option.
So the eight hundred thousand dollar option is replacing everything. So it'd be, you know, new condensers, evaporators, all of the new. Hardware for an HVAC system. So right now, the system isn't an efficient system. So it'd be. A complete redesign and replacement. That's where you get that cost from. The hybrid approach is leaving the existing system in place. The problem is the existing system basically just has. You know, one temperature. So if the library is set to to be at sixty eight and you have a hundred people in there. It's going to be sixty eight, but your other spaces may be much colder because you don't have the people in there heating up the space. So you would then.
I I have memories of many evenings in this very room.
Add the the separate units, you could then add separate conditioning to some of those other spaces so that you're not. Dependent on solely the library's climate to to deal with those spaces, but it's it's not. It's bringing in smaller units to deal with those spaces as opposed to one central system that would have. In the kind of multiple zones to then deal with each of the different office spaces and everything else.
So keep in mind that none of this was part of the original scope. And so, you know, as you know, when we were talking about this in the B and G meeting. Came up because, you know, we we asked some probing questions of the architect and say, you know, with the design of the library, we would fix. You know, these issues and then they were like, no, that's not part of his scope because no one really ever brought that up to them. And I think, you know, when you don't live here and be here a lot and you don't know how that temperature is, but I mean, I'm always texting Gary, it's too hot in here, too cold in here. I'm going to die, you know, like you don't see me doing that, but I'm texting him and then he's texting a custodian who's unchanging the temperature because we're in here. In a room with no windows, right? So so we're we're addressing that. And it is kind of an ideal time to do it. Like I would say, oh, man, Brian, why'd you bring this up? You know, I'm going to kill you now because I got so much else we're trying to do, but it is the ideal time to do it because if we're going to be making. Changes to your air air conditioning system, you've got a vendor coming in to do the mar gym. You might as well have one vendor do it all and and you will likely get a better price. And then if we decided to do it a year from now or two years from now. So, you know, it is the right time.
Right, I mean, there's certainly the economic scale that there's also the fact that all of this is going to get renovated, opened up. So it really is the time. To do it and at least, you know, my view is that I really don't want to see us spend all of that money to. Renovate the library and be stuck with the same climate issues that that we have. I I do think it's important. If we're going to spend that type of money, you know, north of a million dollars to renovate the library that we address. That that condition.
Plus, we're creating more enclosed spaces, which will create, make the problem even worse.
Exactly.
So it's clear we needed to do something. It was outside of the scope, but we've now.
We've put it in.
Needed to put it into the scope, yes. So I I and I'm as much saying this for the for the non-B and G. Committee board members to hear. But can we talk a little about the? Risks of, so we know, we know, we know that the eight hundred thousand dollar version is the. Exactly. So we, you know, we know when we we have to, we have to control costs that there could sometimes be. Either either additional labor or what's, you know, what what do we end up paying for in the in the lower, the lower cost project?
As you said, they're going to use the existing system. They're going to use the existing ductwork. They're not changing all that, but they're going to be adding pumps and. Devices to to allow for variable control. And that's the key. The architects are pretty confident that they can do this. They they even may be able to add some more, as Brian was saying, more functionality so that we could even add on. To to cover some of these other spaces. Because I think it's still not going to be addressing here in that other room. But that number I'm still waiting for to see how much more functionality they can include. And again, we can also stage that as an alternate. If if. We have such great wonderful bids, we can put an alternate to say, yes, put do this and that and then not award it again. Like those are all our our tools and our toolkit to to work on. There's a lot of moving parts here. And we're just trying to give you a picture of all the thoughts that that's going into the project right now. I don't think we can make that decision this minute. We're not going to do that. I'm on you? I'm plucking into my microphone, so it shouldn't be on you. Maybe I need to talk into it more. But so those are all the decision points that we that we have to, you know, make. But we're just trying to give you the, you know. The board, the the whole process of what's going on. There's a lot of time that that has been these conversations we're having. So we're trying to. Give you that. I do agree that this is an important initiative to to address. I just hope a lot of the other things come in better so that we can, you know, be in a position to award just about everything. And this can also be bid out as an alternate. So if we really find that we're not where we need to be, we bid it out as an alternate and they don't do this part.
Yeah, look, we certainly have that ability. I would much rather see something else not get done. Than than this. I mean, I I really think it is a critical piece of the project to do it while. It's being renovated, while everything is being opened up so that we can address it now. I I, you know, I'd rather see. Something else get delayed or picked up later. I I really think it's important that. This becomes part of the project and becomes part of the budget going forward because. The last thing I want to do is spend a million dollars to renovate the library and and create these additional spaces, which are, we know are going to be. Not pleasant to be in. I I just really can't see us going forward with the library renovation without addressing it. So. At least for me, it really is, I think, an imperative thing that we add to the project. It obviously has impacts on it. But I I just can't, you know, see people using a new space that they're not going to be comfortable in.
It would be totally contrary to what the initiative is, right? We're trying to make the library more functional to represent what the students' needs are today. And frankly, if we didn't address this, we're going to make spaces that are just ungodly and they will not be used and will actually lose capacity. In the library.
So additionally, though, if this is the approximate cost, understood that it's it's a quarter of a million dollars. Say, you know, as an estimate, it would certainly be more if we had to do it. By tearing, opening these things up again. So. Looking at like an apples to apples comparison, but rather if we delay it, it's one, it's one of those projects that if you delay it, it costs more to do rather than.
Absolutely.
Yeah, like like everything. I mean, you're going to get the best pricing as part of the overall project. And especially when you're doing other HVAC work, to have that part of the work that everyone's bidding on. You're you're certainly going to probably get a better pricing. You're also then not going to have to deal with potentially renovating, again. Renovated space to come to, you know, put in wires, lines, whatever else you may need for the split systems, so.
And as far as managing the split systems, the the staff here has the expertise to do that. I mean, with the exception of like major repairs.
Yeah, the management of 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 these modifications wouldn't have any required shifts from practice over what they do today.
It'd be a control system, a control system that goes with it.
And the decision to make this an alternate or make this a part of the bid is. Is a decision that needs to be made for the ninety percent drawing.
No, no, the ninety percent drawing will include this. And then, once we, you know, that's going to happen over the summer, I think, as we. As SED is working on their approval, we'll be working on our bid strategies. I think that was on one of our slides. So we'll be, we'll be figuring out how we want to bid this out. And we'll have our cost estimates by then. Again, those are just estimates. Until you get a bid, you don't know. And then you make a decision on, do we make it an alternate, do we not? I would think that, you know, you you might not want to make it an alternate. Because a lot of times the pricing on an alternate is different than the pricing when it's in the, when it's in a bid. Yeah, and if I'm bidding on the mar gym AC, same bidder is probably going to bid on the TG gym. They're all going to bid on that. And then the Main Street School Gym, the same vendor is probably going to pick up all of that.
So I I have to say, when I look at the savings that can be achieved in. Something like the outside entranceway versus up making sure that we can do a project like this that deserves to be done. And really, there's every advantage to having it done at this time, not to mention. Not to mention the fact that ventilation has become a very different consideration over the past year. So it's. I I kind of look at these things as. But I I also with Brian would support. Making this a part of the, making this a part of the bid rather than making it an alternate.
Any other questions at this point? So I think we will get more information on the entryway.
Thank you.
To to address those questions and we can have a further discussion at our. Our next meeting with the the hope that by then we have at least a. Majority or consensus of the board that is in favor of one option or the other so that we can then. Give direction to the architects at that time to proceed.
So you, Brian, just so I can give directions to the architect, you think that might be on the May eleventh meeting?
That that would be, that that is the goal, but it's a comment on them to get us information to answer the questions that came up tonight. So. Obviously, if we don't get that in a timely way, that's going to impact everything. So. You know, the more we can get from them. And I think it will be also, you know, helpful. Maybe it's not, you know, the the full drawings, or maybe it's that that we circulate, or at least a sketch which just shows. The path in option one in terms of the size versus the path in option two. In terms of what the hard spaces, just so people can have a better sense of, you know, what it actually would look like, just from a top down view. We don't need elevations inside, but just, you know, top down view. Here are the doors. Here's path in one. And what the path in and combination stairs would look like in phase in the second option.
Could I also make an observation that didn't really occur to me until tonight? When you look at the two renderings and you look at the amount of fencing that's been added in option two as well, the way that there's just railings. Added to the entrance that weren't there before. While I I understand that the majority of. The. Of Beth's comments and observations are are still present and still valid. I think that the visual impact of. All of that fence is quite different from that original rendering, which has no fence leading up to the, and and maybe there's a way that we can. Moderate or soften that that look.
Um, I'm going to tell you right now, there's you're going to need railings there because you have a drop off. By by code, you'll need to have. A railing on that ramp because you have a drop.
Yeah, you know, the other thing about ramps, about railings, I don't want to call it a fence, it's a railing.
Yes.
You know. And and I'll just say this from experience, when you're with somebody who's elderly, they appreciate being able to hold, even if they can walk. They appreciate sometimes being able to hold on to a railing. And so, you know, there's always that piece of it when you have a railing rate versus a ramp. If people get tired, they want to be able to just hold on. And sometimes we do have, you know, older people coming into the school for whatever reason. Or someone who might just be tired or, you know, who needs to hold on. So I I I like the idea of having a railing on a long span like that, but. You know, I do understand it aesthetically, it's not quite as great.
Oh, I think she's just saying the type of railing. I mean, you need to have a railing under code. I mean, you couldn't not, but.
So we'll we'll take, I'll help, I'll go back to him and ask him about the railing, you know, how to soften the railing. So that's a point where.
Yeah, the functionality and code requirement versus something that appears to be a barrier, right? Is, I think, some of the consideration.
Really, it was only tonight as I, as I looked at the two side by sides, because I think that second rendering arrived today. Earlier, so you have a chance to sort of reflect on them and it it is a very big difference and. Certainly, you know, we can't, we're going to have to do what's code compliant and that's, you know, that's part of the. That's part of getting the savings is changing the look, but. Worth asking the question now.
Okay, so with that, while we move on to our consent agenda, are there any questions on tonight's consent agenda?
I did have a question. Is it okay? I don't want to necessarily pull it out, but I did have a question that I would love to have expounded publicly. Coaching, pulling the coaches across coaching and stuff like that. Public discussion, not discussion, but just a state statement.
Go ahead.
You know, I mean, can you just talk, talk about the 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 coaching appointments?
Yeah, so we've had some shifts in our coaching staff based upon avail, actual availability of individuals. And I believe that we're landing in a position where I think we're going to see. Actually, some high quality coaches. I heard you reference baseball, some real experienced quality coaches that are going to be joining us to work with our our student athletes. When we look at this year in particular, when we're thinking about. What our enrollment looks like or participation numbers for baseball, we're not going to have enough student athletes to be able to have both of varsity. And a JV team. So we're going to try to come up with a plan that is inclusive of of approach as possible at the varsity level. But then we have many students. We have like ballpark of thirty student athletes that are interested in modified baseball. So in working with Mr. Bonamano, our athletic director, we've come up with a model where we've identified and this is going to be. A framework that we're actually going to present to the Irvington Athletic Council on Tuesday, I think, is our next meeting. Where we're looking at different criteria where, one, we have the staffing, we have the facilities, we have the, you know, we have the student athletes. And we have the resources and the competition to be able to support a program. So rather than saying, hey, we have a qualified baseball coach, we're, we don't have enough for a JV team, so we're just not going to employ somebody. When we have thirty middle schoolers that are interested in 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 competing, that we're actually going to look to have two modified baseball teams this year. Utilizing the existing staffing resources that we had available to us for the JV. We also explored. Looking at, in some sports, there is a kind of a hybrid modified program where it's. You can take in ninth graders into a modified program. We've done that in football here locally, but there aren't any baseball teams in our region. Where we're looking to try to expand and bridge and have like that JV concept, but there simply isn't the competition to do it. So this adjustment will provide for, of course, our varsity baseball program. That we we're going to strive to be as inclusive. So we may have some students that will be more practice squad. Student athletes that may get some varsity minutes here and there. And then we will have two modified. Baseball teams utilizing the JV coaching staff to facilitate that.
My my only feedback there would just be that briefly would be that, timing wise, at the last council meeting, this might have been a good conversation to have had. Just because we were specifically talking about, you know, what we were talking about in modified baseball and versus varsity baseball and JV and. This came, you know, this, it would have been, just some feedback, would have been a good time to have had that conversation prior instead of after.
I don't think, I I just, I don't disagree with you. I think that the data wasn't readily available at that moment. This surfaced to me a couple of days after that. And when the registration had closed and I, you know. Part of me, I don't know the timeline of the two meetings and and the meeting and the the registration deadlines. But it surfaced and we tried to make the best interest to kids. And I think we can use this as a good model with the council when we meet next week.
Seems like a great one.
My hope so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve our consent agenda? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Dr. Harrison, over to you.
So, um, as Mr. Graber was referencing, um, a number of, um, coaching, appointments and adjustments that we had to make, um, and some other routine appointments. I do, I would like to, um, go through though and acknowledge and thank many, um, community members and friends who have made donations to numerous student scholarships. I also want to acknowledge, um, the IAF for supporting a Minnie Jean Brown Tricky, living history presentation, um, that is going to occur at, um, IMS. And I want to say this is going to be like, I'm excited about this. And it, you know, the story of Minnie, Minnie Jean, uh, uh, Brown Tricky, you know, she is one of the Little Rock nine, right? The, the nine African-American students that began to integrate Little Rock High School following Brown versus Board of Education. So this is like a historic figure, right? In American history, the civil rights movement and in education. She is actually going to join virtually, um, and lead a presentation for our students at the middle school. So I got to say like, I'm really excited. Like I get chills thinking about like having that opportunity to see and hear from somebody of this magnitude. And to think that we're affording this opportunity to our students. Uh, so it's really powerful. And I want to thank our, our friends at the IAF for their support. Uh, Patricia, just for one credit edit that I do want to make is that there's no E in the middle of it's M-I-N-N-I. Jean. So there's a typo on the right and I want to make sure that we certainly get that correct moving forward. The spelling of Minnie Jean, M-I-N-N-I.
It's a big deal.
Yes.
It's a very big deal.
Yeah, this is huge. I'm, I'm, like I said, I'm really excited for it.
Like having a Holocaust.
Okay. Thank you. So our next meeting is on May 11th at 7:30 here and via Zoom. Uh, we do have, uh, our, our community comment period as well. So if there's anyone else in the community that wishes to make a comment at this time, now is the time.
Yeah. And, and I just, as you're waiting for community, I do also want to add that the PTSA is also supporting half of the cost of the Minnie Jean Brown Tricky, uh, event as well. So thank you to our friends at the PTSA.
Uh, seeing that we have no other comments, is there a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Have a good night.
Night, everyone.